What time is it? Seven ten.
Yes.
All right, council work session called to order. Everyone's welcome at the council work session. No council action that's making motions or approvals is taken during the work session. Mr. Bernier, do you have a trivia question for us? I don't want to put you on this.
Two.
You can make.
He's just gonna take me a moment.
That's okay.
Come back to him.
You want me to come back? Do you want me to come back to you?
If you guys have time, I don't want to hold any. I wouldn't want this meeting to go any longer than. I can't even find my charger.
You want me to go grab mine?
I'm not ready for a turn of session.
Okay. We'll catch it at the end of the work session, okay? So, items for discussion, 2023 goals. Review, add, delete goals to the Excel spreadsheet. Y'all should have that in your packet, yellow, blue and yellow. And you were asked before to make additions, corrections, or questions. So.
I have some.
Go ahead, Randy.
Changes here. Okay, in the blue, you have Climate Action Plan. And then down in the yellow, we have Environmental Advisory Board and Climate Action Plan. Should either we move the yellow up with the blue and coordinate all those three together? If that makes sense.
What was that third one?
It's on the second page.
Second page down, it's the Environmental Advisory Board slash Climate Action Plan. And up in the blue, it's just Climate Action Plan. So I was suggesting moving from what's in the blue down to the yellow. With that, group that whole process together.
Move, okay. We'll move it to the yellow. You talked, move the Climate Action Plan.
Yes, from the blue to the yellow.
Okay, good.
And then another one is certification for sustainable community. Should this go down into the EBA slash Climate Action Plan?
They're slightly different. What that is, is a program to get us certification so that when Don is doing grants, we get the points for this certification to give us more points for grant things. So it's related, but it is not actually part of the climate action plan.
Okay, so what I would suggest there is that we just kind of, in front of these, behind that, say grants, if that's what it's doing.
Okay, yeah.
And then the next one would be revisit the school resource officer. We did this.
Yes.
And this should go. Review, update police policy, I'm in the yellow now. Review, update police policy and procedures. This, to me, is a police responsibility to review and update. And then it could be brought back from, you know, to council, whatever it is they've updated to provide that information. Because this is one of Chief Weaver's goals. So I just suggest moving this, because that, to me, that falls on the police shoulders at this point. We don't know enough to do their policies yet. We're not that involved, that part of it. And then the last one I have.
Aren't we just reviewing that? We're not creating it?
Creating what?
It says review, update. Should we continue to review it once it's been?
We haven't reviewed anything that they've already done over the last two years. And right now, that whole process is in its third year. It started in 20, went in 21, and 22, so more than that. So now we're in 2023, and he's bumped it ahead again.
And we put money in the budget this year for him to do that. It's not something that we, as a council, agree with him, should, would be doing anything. If you have review there, then it's to say, did you get it done?
Okay.
That's the only thing. But I don't think that's a vote or a discussion really we have in here on council.
And then, so the other one I had was wayfinding entrance signage, says revise and stall. I think before it used to say waiting for money. So is there money now to complete that?
I don't know that it's been approved.
No, we don't have the funding yet.
Yeah, so that didn't really change.
No.
So that should go back to waiting for money then, if anything, right? Instead of revise and install.
And related to that one, I was gonna say, the ones we get to this revise and stall and doing the grant needs, when we do that, we need to include DBI's Design Committee, because they were the ones doing the lead on that. So that should probably be noted as well.
Actually, I think, and Gina can chime in, Joanne, I think DBI's the one that's trying to get the funding for the signage. And in the borough, we have to work, I think, with PennDOT. And that's some of the issues, I believe.
Yeah, for downtown. They, look, PennDOT, you know, obviously has oversight of the right of ways. And they've only done kind of a write-off, giving local communities oversight of signage in a couple places. So we talked with PennDOT about that, wanted maybe to get a copy of, I think, a copy of the agreement.
Yeah, there was the one that was in Tombo of Spring Township.
Yeah, or somewhere around Allentown.
Because it was like where the signage to be was in Spring Township to get people to come into town.
Yes, but actually, that's an example, but all the, the entire downtown is in the PennDOT's right-of-way, between the building faces.
So, related to that, it's not on here, but I think it's associated with it. It's the thing that we have on the agenda this evening about kiosks. That's part of the wayfinding system, so I think they need to be linked together somehow. Because.
Yes, if they're in the right-of-way, yes.
Well, I guess it would be, if we're gonna put the kiosks so people can fly, they're gonna be municipal lots.
Municipal lot.
I think that's part of the design team. They pick out the appropriate location.
So it is part of this wayfinding entrance thing. It's all part of the same issue.
I think we're good for now. Others?
Let's see.
Are there more stamped crosswalks going in the downtown area other than the ones we've already seen?
We want to eventually do pretty much every intersection.
Okay. Oh, wow, that's good.
Yes, our street skate project over around West Bishop and South Spring will have some.
Yeah.
Other than the ADA access to the new Armory Building, how's everything else going with that? Don't we have a committee? And what's happening with that? Are we moving along?
Yes, the sprinkler system design is being worked on, and so is the elevator design.
What about that?
In fact, we're meeting, I think we're meeting soon to discuss when, they're hoping to go out for bid sometime in February.
We have that in our business meeting, in the notes from Don. He updated us on that. And we can touch on it there.
I have a whole bunch of things similar to.
Go ahead.
Okay, the mustard lane hours open to the public. The cameras have arrived, so I was wondering if this could be put on the, that issue could be put on the work session and action for sometime in February now that we have the cameras here.
Cameras are here, and they're not installed yet. But you're, what we want to do, Joanne, is, we do want to resolve the change in the time issue, but probably not until April, so we have until April to get that done.
Okay, so we, February, March, for the.
Yeah.
I'd like to see us have those ready to go by the end of March.
Yeah.
Well, it opens, it opens April 1st for the public, so that's.
Okay.
When the hours would probably change.
Randy already took care of that one. The thing about the constant contact, I'd like to have some, that put into a work session so we can, so we can get activity on there, so we do have more transparency to the community.
Well, basically, we're trying, I mean, as part of some of my goals that I set for myself this year, to look at that as well.
Okay.
We're gonna try to find some system, package that works for us, that, I mean, cost, usability, you know, user-friendliness and all that stuff.
So I'd like that, sometime within the next quarter or something, to have that on the work session.
Yeah, I have, obviously, take some time to research what's out there, what other municipalities use, and do some comparisons.
So the next one is the Borough Information Kiosk. Move that blue down into the wayfinding in the yellow. The Borough Information Kiosk, just move that and combine it with the.
And move it down to the wayfinding?
Yeah, because it's part of the whole wayfinding. It's the last blue.
It's the last blue line.
Yep.
Move it down to about six spots on the yellow. I can't move. P D F.
Under the, then, under the wayfind, there's aging water and sewer mains. Isn't this a water authority issue?
It is, but for some reason, it ended up on our goals list.
Yeah, so I'm saying it probably doesn't need to be there because of that. Also, there's another one exactly like that. Let me find that one. The sewer line infiltration. Neither one of those are council activities. What does improved asset management mean?
Well, it's everything, assets or anything from street signage all the way to water and sewer pipes, parks, equipment, parks benches, you name it, pavilions, which we're trying to capture each asset and then have an inventory of that, and then look at replacement timeframes, costs, and budget accordingly. So Julie's helping us with that.
So that would be something towards the end of the year where we.
Probably.
Okay. Okay. Also, what is, what is council's involvement with the budget enhancement process for the Fire Executive Board?
I think that was the one where we talked about it during budget season. We need to, we need to work with the Fire Executive Committee on their process and how they're doing their budget, because I believe Randy was saying that they need, they need more money, and we need to work with them on the process, not just coming to the borough, but there's, there's two other entities in play. So we gotta figure out with them how that's all gonna work. That's what I think it is.
Yes, that's what it is.
So on this goal sheet in there, it's almost like a two-step process, is have the Fire Executive Board come up with a plan, then bring it to council.
Well, it can go that way, but it was brought up, I think we're gonna try to do some homework through staff on what maybe some other boroughs are doing with their fire departments, how they're funded, and bring that to Borough Council, because it was brought up in our budget process. And then maybe Randy, through being representative, could take it to the Fire Executive Board.
Okay.
And it's my understanding that, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've had these discussions, if, I've been told, the, that meeting with the townships is up to the fire department, Fire Executive Committee.
Yes.
So how much of, so my question then comes.
I do wanna work with.
So how much of this is involved with council, is basically what I'm asking?
Well, I think we want to have you comfortable with whatever we're talking about as far as options. You, you know, you folks around the table should know and what's being proposed, being looked at, and then we'll pass it on once you're satisfied with it. It'll probably be a work session, then maybe an action item at some point.
There shouldn't be a 3% cap on their budget, you know, just 3%. I mean, if they can justify their budget and it comes in higher, well, they should be able to bring it to their executive committee, which should go back to their municipalities and support that.
Okay.
We need to review that whole, that whole agreement that was signed, because it's supposed to be looked at annually, I believe.
Yeah.
From my look at it, I don't think we've ever looked at it unless there's somebody's taking it on the ground to do it.
So it is multiple groups of people working on that one. Next one is the snow removal in Tallyrand Park and waterfront steps. It says determined removal. What, what do you mean by that?
Well, it probably could be better worded, but right now, there're no, I mean, there's occasional volunteer assistance, but there's no regular removal of snow.
So this is removal of snow, okay.
On the steps and on the walkway.
I think too, Ralph, this goes back to.
Yes.
Our budgeting process that if we're gonna, if council makes that a priority and wants us to do that, then we have to put some more money in parks and bring some people in to help clear it.
Yes, we've never had seasonal, winter seasonal assistance.
Okay.
You know, in the parks area.
I think too, that the boroughs should have the right to close that, those steps at the one end.
Well, we, we do, and we do it, and really, that's because of liability, you know, but we do take those steps. And that's something, you know, we should have a policy on.
I agree.
Okay, then the next one is, I'm just trying to clarify. It says replace aged street light poles on Allegheny West Night. Are these the traffic lights or the historical things?
Historical.
Historical lights. We're just waiting on the poles.
Okay, I just need to know which it was. Okay, and then the final one is suburb property, property, yes, subway property leased out. Isn't this already completed? Do we need it here?
It's just like within a whisker of being completed.
Well, it's completed now for signature.
So this really doesn't need to be here then? Or move it down to red for completed.
Yeah, we can move that.
Okay.
Any others? I just have one quick question. Agreement with the Teenage League Board, what is that?
The new Teenage League, Jeremy Lucas is now kind of overseeing the field and everything. He's been doing it now for maybe a year and a half. He would like some type of an agreement like we have with the school district for, since that's borough property, just so that he knows, I think, what his responsibilities are and what ours are. So that's being worked on as well.
Okay. It's 7:26, so we were gonna adjourn this meeting at 7:25, but there isn't any other corrections or additions to the goals, actions items. I'm gonna ask one more time for a trivia question, if you have one.
In honor of Martin Luther King.
Okay.
Can anyone tell me how old he was when he entered college?
Oh, in college?
I do not know.
Sixteen?
Excellent. King skipped two grades and entered college at the age of 15. He was admitted to Morehead College in 1944 and graduated in 48 with a BA in sociology at the age of 19.
I knew what college he went to.
Long a motion to adjourn this work session.
Does, real quick, so do we, what do we have, do we say we're gonna do for the next work session?
The next work session, I know we have at least 30 minutes of the engineer coming in to provide counsel, his design for the CDBG portion of South Spring Street, Street Skate Project. So that'll be 30 minutes.
In the regular meeting, we're gonna circle back to this.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So I have a motion to adjourn this.
I'll second Brockville.
Thank you. All those in favor of?
You can't vote, you can't vote on work session.
Okay.
Shorten that further.
So we got five minutes. I'm gonna call the business, Balfont Borough Business Council meeting to order at 7:30 PM. Welcome, everybody, to the council meeting. We wanna keep it short. Due to the room acoustics, please speak up when talking so that people can hear you, what you're saying. All comments and reports should be kept to three minutes maximum. So right now, I'd like to do the pledge allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. Stewart, could I have the roll call, please?
Mr. Bernier.
Present.
Mr. Blackfield.
Here.
Ms. Clayton.
Here.
Ms. Dan.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Ms. McKean.
Here.
Ms. Purnell.
Here.
Ms. Sedgwick.
Here.
Ms. Tosti Vacy.
Here.
Mayor Johnson is excused.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. So in accordance with Act 65, 2021, if a matter is not on the agenda, council may take official action on it with the following exceptions. Council can act on matters relating to potential and real emergencies. Council may add a matter of agency business to its agenda through a majority vote. Council must state the reason why the action item is being added to the agenda. Council may vote to add an action item to the agenda. Are there any action items that are needed to be added to the agenda tonight from any council members? Not moving forward. Number five, public comment. This public comment period is for oral comments regarding any action items listed on this meeting agenda or any comments in general. No deliberations will be entered into the council at this time. Please sign in, come to the podium at appropriate time, state your name, address, and which item you are speaking about. And please limit your comments to three minutes. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Montika Compher. My husband and I own Compher's Jewelers, and we also have an Airbnb on East Bishop Street. And I just wanted to say that the Airbnbs and the short-term rentals have been really good for our business whenever people come to stay, which often is for funerals, because they have to tell us the reason they're staying. And they often come into town for, you know, meet friends or for funerals, different things, or they come to, you know, spend Christmas there. We've had, almost every holiday has been booked. They usually come into town and they eat at Urban Cafe, they eat at Bonfatto's, they come into the stores. Many of them don't even know I own the Airbnb, and they'll say that they're, they're staying in a local Airbnb. We recently just bought another house, hoping to open an Airbnb on Zion Road, which is still in the borough. So I'd really like you all to consider keeping the short-term rentals. We've never had a problem, not once has there been ever a problem with noise or anything. And frankly, I could have renters in there that could cause just as much problems. So I really think they benefit the town, and they are a nice way to generate income for people that own them. And I hope that you guys reconsider forcing all these extra rules and extra things on people that are trying to bring business to the community. And as a business person, I can definitely attest to both, so.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening. It's been a long adventure on this short-term ordinance. I strongly feel, which you've heard it before, that Balfont needs STRs in R1 and R2 in limited numbers, owner occupied. The current ordinance will, will make them go away within years, but there will be no more short-term rentals. I also feel that the 60 days is not sufficient, and I would like to see you do something more like State College's 123 days. I don't understand why Balfont, who doesn't have a hotel, wants to implement short, the shortest STR ordinance in the area. On a personal level, it's best for me if you don't allow STRs in R1 or R2, and let them slowly die out. However, that's not what I think is best for Balfont. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Thanks for letting me speak again. Last week, you all discussed short-term rentals in detail, and I truly appreciate it. We've all been through a long ordeal here, no more than you people. So I really appreciate the effort you're putting in.
Could I just give you, can I just?
Absolutely. I just figured everybody knew me, even the people who are watching. I'm Bruce Feely, I live on Curtain, and I own an Airbnb. Last week, it was discussed whether the long-term, short-term deal should be permitted in the ordinance. You went back and forth on it. No true answer was given, but there was some understanding where people thought it might be a good idea. You also discussed whether short-term, whether short-term rentals should be allowed in the R1, R2 zones in the future. And again, there was no decisive answer there. There were good points, there was some concern about opening it up to public comment again. And then the most, the most important part I heard last week was, we wanna get this right. We wanna do it. And going back to that last point I just made about allowing them in the R1, R2s, if you prolong it and push it off to a vote next summer or try and reintroduce it, you're gonna sit here and do the same thing again. I don't think any of us want that. So I ask that you would reconsider, do it once, do it right, and allow a certain amount, however that's configured, in the R1 and R2 districts, or zones, excuse me. I think it's good for the community. I think we've proven through business owners and other people, there were actually two people in the audience last week that wanted to start an STR in their personal residence and were denied because the decision was made by one person to, with precedence under one court case that it would not be considered. I don't remember, I have a bad memory, so I may be wrong with this, but I don't remember discussion from the council on whether that should be true. I believe it was stated by one person, and we have precedence, and we are no longer gonna issue STRs in the community. You didn't vote on it, you didn't talk about it. It was just decided, and from that point, now we are, with no STRs issued and permits issued since, I believe, August of 2021. So I ask you to reconsider and just get this done right once. Thank you for your time.
Any others? Public comment? Council members, any comments to put in? Okay, we'll move on. Communications?
First one is Balfont Easter Egg Hunt, which is a committee, wants to use Tallyrand Park on Saturday, April 8th, this, of this year. The details will be worked out, but they're looking to have conditional approval, looking for that to be approved.
I'm looking for a conditional approval of the emotion, a motion to conditionally approve Saturday, April 8th, 2023, for the Balfont Easter Egg Hunt.
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
Yeah, so this is just to save the date?
I believe so, there's, there's some details in the letter.
Well, my point is, we have an application now.
Yes.
And we need to see the application before we approve.
That's correct.
Prove any, any allowance on this.
Lee, that was Dan. Dan made the motion, Brockville seconded.
Yes.
Any other comments? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Related to this, the letter also asked for approving a banner for 30 days. This was not on the agenda this evening, so I'm saying that this is not emergency, which is why I didn't bring it up earlier. I suggest we hold off on approving the banner until the next meeting, and meanwhile, make sure there's no conflict with the banner. In addition. In addition, they were requesting a full month, and I understand that the banners are only allowed for a two-week period. So I think we probably need to get back in touch with them before, so that we have updated information for that next meeting.
I agree.
We'll take care of that.
I'll take care of it. Okay, consent agenda. There are two items, one for approval on our agenda. Council meeting minutes for January 3rd. I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the minutes as written and discussion.
I was going to make a motion to do both of them, because there's a consent agenda.
There is a correction.
The financials?
I'm not the correction on the minutes.
Yeah, yeah, well, yeah, we had a motion, and is there a second to Randy's? Okay, now, would you like to make a correction?
Yeah, I just, they're on the agenda or on the minutes last time. It says I was excused and I was actually here, so.
Right.
It needs to be corrected.
I think that was a leftover from.
Yeah, it was a leftover from the one before.
Okay, I appreciate everybody sending in their corrections before the meeting. Are there any other corrections? All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Good. The December financials will be included in the February. There's nothing to be approved there.
Okay.
Okay, reports. You've all seen the reports or you're looking at the reports on the agenda. Before I move to the Historical Architectural Review Board, I hope you've all looked at 348 East Curtain Street. And the HARP Committee has recommended approval of the exterior renovations. So I'd like to have a motion to approve 348 East Curtain Street renovations and a second, and then we'll have the discussion.
Mr. President, is the chief, is he going to report?
Well, his report, he left us, he was.
He's good to go.
Was ill.
The most gamble I get in trouble is if I skip the mayor.
I understand.
Does anybody have questions for the chief? Let's get this motion resolved first, then we'll go back to the.
We have a motion by Bernier.
I'll second.
Second. Is there a discussion on the motion? This is the motion for 348 East Curtain Street.
Just a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
What they're doing, I think, is a nice idea, is that back in the 80s, someone put in windows that were too small for the house, and they look a bit funny, in the sense that they don't hit the proportions with the ones that they remain. I really personally like the idea that they are doing what they're supposed to be doing historically. And I would like to thank them.
Okay, thanks. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, motion carried. It's approved, Gina. Number two on the list is zoning. Fee for short-term rentals suggested 150 to 200. We'd like to consider this as a discussion on the upcoming work session in February. Is that okay with council? All right, can we add that to the?
Yes.
Okay. Liaison reports. Anybody have questions for the liaison reports?
The first one, well, I have a whole bunch, but the first one, it says that it says Van Show Performance Center project, that I thought was part of Don's report that was the whole memo. So shouldn't this say submitted instead of just blank?
Well, I guess we can consider that report from Don submitted as part of that.
Yeah. Then there were three reports that were submitted, but are actually not in the packet. Bellefonte Environmental Advisory Review Board, the Bellefonte Borough Authority, and the Center County Airport Authority. So I'd like to have them in the next packet.
Oh, wait, I think the minutes were in, the minutes were included.
The minutes were included from the authority and from the airport authority. They're in here.
Yes.
I looked through, I didn't find them. I had downloaded them individually, so maybe I skipped them.
Okay, well, they're.
They are here.
They're in my materials.
Okay, okay, so. My bad.
Any others, Joanne?
Nope.
Okay. Other members, any comments, questions? Okay, we'll move on to current and old business. And the first item is adoption of short-term rental ordinance. Part of the borough zoning regulations. A copy of the short-term rental ordinance draft is included in your meeting packet. The draft was non-sustainability, edited following a council work session held on January 12th. Borough solicitor Stover has reviewed the draft and offered some edits as well. Council action on the draft ordinance, along with any amendments, is expected to take place at this meeting. So I'm looking for a motion and a second to approve the short-term rental ordinance as it's drafted in your packet and discussion after I have a motion and a second. Joanne made the motion and Deborah seconded the motion. So you all have read this. It's in your packet. It's time for discussion.
I'd like to see us do what we did at the end of our last meeting when we went through this. We go through each page, and if there's nothing to discuss, we can continue to move to the next page and take the amendments as they come up, then vote at that time on each amendment that might come up.
Does the rest of council have any objections to that suggestion?
Just to clarify what you're saying.
Yeah, we can just go over the new, the highlighted stuff, right? It's changed.
Let me get to mine. So Randy has asked us to go line by line with the ordinance that's in our packet.
I asked you to go page by page.
Page by page, which means line by line, pretty much.
And there would be just the yellow highlighted thing?
It could be. It depends what people want to do if they want to amend stuff.
Might be. No, 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 I have it here. It's just at the bottom. So why don't we start with just the highlighted items that we changed from the original discussion? And then if you have questions on the other pages, we can bring those up. So who has it in front of them right now?
I have it.
Here, I have it, right? One of me.
Obviously, this draft doesn't show what was deleted, the definitions we talked about at the work session. So this has what was added in and tried to highlight it.
Can you clarify the adoption date thing?
Well, we want to look at adopting this, but the effective date is what Gina's asking about. If this goes through, we'd like to make the effective date 30 days from now, or February 17th, to give us time to review the fee.
No, sorry.
Sorry, why?
We can't.
Come up to the podium, Gina, I'm sorry.
It can't go into an effect until you have adopted a fee, because if you adopt this tonight, tomorrow morning, people will come to me asking for the applications to get it in in the next 30 days.
We would adopt it, but it wouldn't be effective.
Right, you said effective 30 days from tonight. It has to be effective 30 days from when you do the fee.
Okay, I thought we were going to do the fee two weeks from now.
Right, so it would be effective 30 days from, two weeks from now, which would be like March.
So you want like six weeks?
Yeah, because if you adopt it tonight and people come in tomorrow for the application, there's no fee on the application.
Yes, we would not, it wouldn't be effective tomorrow.
Right, okay, I just wanted to clarify that, like until council settles on a fee, people can't come in. And it would be wrong for their 30-day clock to start ticking.
Yeah, we don't want that.
Right, right.
Why do you say the effective date, which we could work on, wouldn't be tomorrow or tonight?
So does that need to be, does it, an effective day or does it need to be?
We'll have to have an amendment to address the effective date.
Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Thank you, yes.
So this 17th J of January 2023 is accurate then, if this would pass?
Yes, yes.
Everybody good with that? Page two, it's under 57505, item B. It's highlighted. What is the question on that?
It's the, I'm at the beginning of the next.
It's the, "The new owner of the property holding a short-term rental permit must apply for a new permit within one year of the transfer of sale."
I have a question about this particular paragraph.
Okay.
And I'm not sure whether this would fit into this paragraph or somewhere else. At our last meeting, we had a discussion about the pre-existing short-term rentals in the R1 and R2 districts that are going to be allowed to continue as non-conforming, that the ones, that those properties that fall under that category right now would be able to continue operating at their current level of activity, even if it exceeds the stated 60 nights.
Yes, right.
And I don't see any wording to that effect in the ordinance. And I think it's important to have that somewhere, so there's no misunderstanding down the road. But I don't see it anywhere else in the ordinance.
We could.
That might be able to be added under "and" versus, which is on page four, they, it's a short-term rental property. It's operating R1 and R2, resident, may be rented out for maximum of 60 nights per year.
And then add additional language for the pre-existing.
Yeah, add something like, for currently.
Or just the pre-existing non-conforming.
I have a question about that.
Yes.
How are you, who determines which ones are non-conforming? Because I don't have a formal list of that.
Like we know, it's going to be based on documentation. That's what we talked about.
What we talked about last week was that they had to.
They had to show documentation.
How many nights per year on a calendar year they've actually been doing it. So if they come in for an application in March, they need to bring in documentation of how many nights in 2022 they rented out their space. And then you would give them a certificate and give, grant them that maximum number of nights.
Yes. Each case is going to be.
And that's going to be only the ones that exist now that are non-conforming? Okay.
So R1 and R2.
Mm-hmm. Non-conforming in all of them.
They are, but there's some that she doesn't know about.
So what I thought we had talked about last week was that you said, once this comes into effect, people will have 30 days if they are actually running. Whether you know about it or not.
Right.
They have to then come to you and file the application. As part of that application, if they can show that they're doing more than 60 nights a year, even though they're not currently on your radar, they would be granted that 60-day or 80-day or 275, whatever it is that they can document that that's how many nights they've used.
Okay.
Does that work?
I'm just trying to process that from an organizational paperwork perspective. It's a little confusing to me because I'm trying to imagine who's going to come. Like, for instance, right now, there are short-term, there are short-term rentals that operate that have rental permits from code. I know that they're short-term rentals. And so like those ones, I mean, I get, do you mind if I use yours as an example? Okay, so Lisa has a rental, a short-term rental. It's rented through code. It's been a short-term rental. It's one of the non-conforming. So Lisa's going to come in to me and say, I rented my short-term rental on Summit Drive for 200 days last year. And she will be granted to continue.
She has to document that.
Right, she will be granted from here on out.
Yes.
Okay, and then, but that's a clear one. So for instance, there are there are people that have rental permits have been denied, short-term rentals, and are only renting long-term. Now, can they come back and say, I'm renting short-term?
No.
Okay. They might try, and then.
They might try, but it's supposed to be someone who's permitted as either a long-term, but you didn't know that they were renting short-term until they brought in the documentation.
Right. Okay. And then so there's, so basically, all of the 30 or 40, well, there could be like 60, so those will all be non-conforming.
Yes.
So.
Even if they don't already have a permit as a short-term rental?
Nobody has a short-term rental.
Right, nobody has a short-term rental permit. I just have an informal list of knowing who is a short-term rental.
Okay.
Since you guys, at least the way that the draft is written, you're not allowing new ones in the R1 and R2, you're effectively saying all the ones that exist now can operate beyond what you're imposing, but what you're imposing would only be, would only account for commercials. I'm like, I'm confused about that.
Not necessarily, because there are so many different business models in the short-term rentals in the R1 and R2. There are some that are operating fewer than 60 nights a year, and there are some that are operating more than 60 nights a year.
Right.
So in order to not penalize those businesses that are currently operating more than 60 nights, if they can establish that they've been operating for however many nights a year in 2022, they can continue up to that threshold. But the ones that are operating less than 60 nights a year can only work up to 60 nights.
So I'll have to.
Just real quick, then if the property transfers, that's the number that goes with the property. It doesn't, you can't expand beyond that.
Okay, so I'm going to have to check each property that comes in and say, okay, this property gets 200 days. This property gets 120 days. This property gets 60. This property gets 49.
No, no.
Yeah.
Everybody gets a maximum, minimum, a maximum, minimum.
Right, okay. I'm just trying to figure out my paperwork and of things for me. Okay, so that's how that would work. Okay.
So if, I'll use Lisa again.
Sure, everybody knows.
You know, or whoever it is, if they have 120 days that they used in 2022, they'll get that plus the 60 of this.
Isn't it the history of the property? I mean, I've been in business for five years. I have different dates. I don't think, isn't it accumulation, not accumulation, but like, aren't you going to look at the total history of the property and not just 2022?
Well, I heard it was 22.
And also, what happens to people that are new to this?
I think it's more than just 22. I think you can look at the history of the property.
It would be reasonable.
Yeah, okay. So I'll need to take the average of all the days.
Depends on what documentation we bring in.
Okay. How many people in State College Borough?
Gina, Gina.
Okay.
Stay on track here.
Okay, all right.
Let's work through this.
I think if the STRs are agreeable, you know, we could do the average, like they're saying. If you go back to 18, does that go back far enough to go to 2018?
Well, 20 and 21 don't really count.
Yes. Yeah, one of our people that started not five years ago, but intended to do this, I mean.
Well, intentions are good, but that doesn't mean.
It's what was established that counts for non-conforming use, so it's.
By established, by what they had done before.
Right.
And is it average?
So let me.
I can't say it's for sure average. Every case is going to be different. I think Gina's going to have to look at the documentation and make a reasoned decision.
And we have to keep in mind that COVID affected a couple of those years that people weren't moving.
I don't know much we can do about that.
But it has to be considered.
We're looking at what actually happened, and if COVID suppressed the demand, it suppressed the demand. There's still, that didn't give the use. But certainly, I agree that that would suggest you'd go back farther than the last year or two.
So here's some language, see if this helps. "Any current property owner that can document the number of nights beyond 60 nights will be granted a certificate of exemption to the 60-night limit."
I'd say it's to be a non-conformity.
Okay, certificate of non-conformity, okay.
And do that as additional language under "and"?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's 50 days plus additional nights?
No, no, it's, they document 100. No, no, it's the, they, they document a hundred and twenty nights. They get a hundred and twenty nights.
Okay.
They do three hundred and sixty-five, they get three hundred and sixty-five.
So what, I'm not clear on what year that, are you going from eighteen?
So what I said was any current property owner that can document the average number of nights beyond sixty nights will be granted a certificate of non-conformity for the additional nights.
And that starts when their permit was issued?
Yeah, should, do you have that, Gina?
No, I don't have that information. I mean, not necessarily unless it was in the past two years, but I could.
Airbnb goes for that.
Hold on, hold on.
I, I would have to contact Code.
Yes.
For each property and find out when, but if it was, yeah.
They have it.
Yeah.
Somebody has it.
Somebody has it.
We have a copy of it.
Code has a copy of it, yeah.
I have a copy of it, some of it.
So let me make sure I'm clear. So depending on when the code or the occupancy code or the rental code.
Permit.
Permit was issued until today, the average number of stays is the day we're going to allow the non-conforming STRs in R1 and R2.
Yeah.
Is that right?
Per year.
Per year.
Average.
Yes.
Yeah. So you want me to say this one more time?
I beg your pardon?
You want me to say the language one more time?
Yeah, just so everybody understands.
Any current property owner that can document the average number of nights per year beyond sixty nights will be granted a certificate of non-conformity for the additional nights, period.
If my recollection is correct, with, with Code, I think this started in about 2015.
Well, Gina will document that.
Yes.
Jeff, is that a major change that it has to be re-advertized?
No, it's not a major change. I guess the only thing I'm thinking is, we talked about the COVID years. That's gonna suppress any average.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm wondering if we should delete those years when calculating.
That would be fine with me.
So delete twenty, nineteen.
Twenty and twenty-one.
Twenty and twenty-one.
Nineteen, twenty, yeah, twenty, nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty. And twenty, twenty-one shall not count toward this.
Or, or could we just take their highest year?
Thank you.
You could do that as well.
That would be much easier.
Be easier.
Okay.
That would be easier for me.
What does counsel think?
Yeah, I, I think that's fair.
Highest year.
Yeah.
Okay, so setting average number, the highest number of nights in the highest year.
Well, the highest year is going to be the highest number of nights, isn't it?
Document the number of nights in the highest year.
Of the highest, okay.
Of the highest year, okay.
So can we put that in a motion now and finish this? As far as the motion goes? Or do you already have a motion on the floor?
I'll make that motion since I put the words in.
Aren't we doing more discussion about other things, though?
Well, that's what I, that's why I wanted, that's why I made the motion.
Rita, they're just asking to make that change. We need a motion on the order. And then we'll continue the discussion, okay? Yes.
So I'll make the motion that, now we've got the highest year. It'll say, current property owners that can document the average number of nights in their highest year will be granted a certificate of non-conformity for the additional nights beyond the sixty.
Karen, I don't think we need the average then, since we're just taking. I, I know that was too many words, I get it.
Okay, no, the average is gone. The number of nights in the highest year beyond sixty nights will be granted these additional nights in a certificate of non-conformity.
Okay. Any other comments on that change in the ordinance?
A second?
A second.
I thought there was a second.
Was there a second?
No.
A second.
All right. Any more discussion on this change?
Amendment.
Amendment to the ordinance. All those in favor of the amendment to the ordinance say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried unanimously. Okay, others. That was on page four.
Yeah, so we go back.
So we're still on page four, right? Or.
Yeah.
Yes, or.
Okay, who wants to start it off? Do I need to read it? Permits required for the establishment of and operation of a short-term rental property shall not be transferable upon, shall not be transferable upon the sale of the subject property. When the property transfers, the new property owner will need to apply for a continuance of the permit in the new property owner's name within one year of the sale of the property. If the permit is not transferred within the R1 or R2 districts, the permit use will be considered as abandoned and the property can no longer be rented as a short-term rental within the R1 and R2 district. That's an amendment or a change from the last time. So it's not an amendment, sorry. Is there any comments on that one?
Everyone? I'm sorry, go ahead. If I'm reading this correctly, it said the permit would go in the new property owner's name. But doesn't the permit go with the land, not with the owner?
Yes.
Goes with the property.
Well, the use, the use goes with the property.
Use goes with the property, permit goes with the name.
Yes.
So that's the way, like, change of ownerships of rentals now. They have to do a new application, check mark, change of owner or change of management, whatever, and then they put in their information and the permit switches to that property owner.
So that's standard.
Yeah, that's what, yeah.
Doesn't affect the property then?
No.
So would this, the new property owner, would it still be considered non-conforming?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do we need to note that in there?
I think it's covered later on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next one is you. Consideration may be given to renting out a qualified accessory building as a second short-term rental with a second short-term rental permit if, and this is the change, the accessory building meets the complete definition of a dwelling unit in order to be rented out separately from the main building.
Yeah, I, we, Mr. President, that was a correction as how it was listed before. But it kind of means the same thing, I believe.
You go with that? Okay, page five. Under five seventy-five oh six, number six. Highlighted either a listing of months and dates owner making the property, a principal resident will be living in the dwelling or a presentation of a copy of the homeowner's homestead exemption. So the, the change was or a presentation of a copy of the homeowner's homestead exemption.
What is that? What is that?
What's the?
That's on your school tax.
Is that, that's, that's, we saw that, okay. I couldn't remember.
So that's the easiest way to document it.
Right.
The property owner has to prove to the state.
Yeah, I knew we talked about that.
And that proves that your owner occupied.
Any other comments on that change?
Some more corrections.
Page six is not changed. Page seven of eight is not changed. Page eight of eight, item F, penalties. The first one, number one, first offense, the change is to the owner. Written warning slash notice of violation sent to the owner via certified mail or hand-delivered with a signature of receipt. Number two, the change was to be paid by owner. And it states, second offense, minimum five hundred dollar fine to be paid by the owner. And, and then number four, the fourth offense, which was added, calendar year slash permit cycle, suspension of rental permit. If in the R1 or R2 residential district, this suspension constitute a, tutes a loss of short-term rental as non-conforming status. That's the fourth offense.
So what happened was we took the third offense and separated it into two different offenses.
Correct, yeah. Any comments on that one? Keep it there as word, number four. Okay, we're back to page one, other comments.
I'm just wondering, referring to the comment that was made earlier about the eventual elimination of short-term rentals because, you know, some property owners may decide when they sell that, that they're not going to renew a, a permit. The new owner may not. I'm just wondering why we couldn't have a set number of non-conforming permits available so that somebody else might be able to take advantage of that in the future? I think that would be fair.
Because otherwise, they, they disappear if, if somebody else does.
Or they continue operating without a permit.
Yes.
Because they know they're not going to get a permit.
I thought we had that discussion at the last meeting. I think you brought it up, right?
I didn't bring it up, but we did have a discussion, I think.
I don't see a way you can do that. Non-conforming means it pre-existed the, the ordinance. So if, if you're now talking about taking a property that didn't have that established use when you passed this ordinance and saying, well, we're gonna pretend it's non-conforming. I, I don't know a way you can do that. What, what I suggested, if, if you want to go in that direction, this would be a major change.
Right.
You could say that you can have so many short-term rentals in an R1 or R2 district by regulating the distance between them. So you can only have one every three hundred feet, lineal feet on the street. That kind of, that kind of a regulation is valid. You could do that.
So, so it could be regulated very differently.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And the discussion was that would mean going through the public hearing process and taking comments and re-advertising if we go to that direction. You're changing the zoning to some kind of density requirement or restriction for short-term rentals versus just working with non-conforming uses under the zoning rules.
Yeah, although even going this way, we'll still have non-conforming uses.
Yes.
Okay?
Okay.
They will stay and they will be, it would be taken into account in measuring those distances for another, for a new short-term rental to be established.
Yeah, that's true.
So what's the rush? Why can't we just do that? There seems to be a.
So I need to, if, if you want to amend that, I need an amendment, motion and a second to add that to this ordinance. Is that accurate?
Well, I mean.
We'd have to go back through the public notice.
Yeah, the whole process starts.
So we start over.
Yeah, so we're, we're pretty much done with the draft. Now you're, you're going in a different direction than you're welcome to. But that, that's the direction.
I've, I've been a proponent of a number of permits from the beginning. So I certainly will not support this tonight. So I would like to see it restarted and redone.
Are you making that amendment?
I don't know. Is that what we need to do?
Yes, I think, and then, of course, if that, if that's the way the vote works out, we would look at re-advertising and all of that. The public hearing process.
I would, I would make that as an amendment.
What, what, specifically what?
Um, that we set a number of permits for R1 and R2. Also, we need to keep the non-conforming as they are now, correct?
You do.
Okay, but going forward, have a specific number of permits so that more people have the opportunity to do this within reason in our R1 and R2.
What I'm saying is not a specific number, but a limit by distance.
Okay.
So then.
Do we?
We'd have to figure out what would be equivalent to the, to the, the number you are thinking about and, and try to regulate it that way.
I see, okay.
What we're talking about, what your, what your point was is anyone who currently has one that's non-conforming and sells. And now a new owner comes in and hypothetically doesn't want to continue. That's the concern that you have in front of, in front of us.
It would be a gradual elimination of having short-term rentals because.
No, I mean, I, I understand that, but what we're, what we're saying here, after going over this for a year and a half, is, is four years, excuse me, four years. Is that we're, we're talking about just the ones that are non-conforming now, or anyone, I guess, that would have one, that sells it. And the new people that come in choose not to use it as a short-term rental.
So.
That's, that's, that's going right along with what you guys are talking about as far as number of permits. I mean, we couldn't just add in there a number of permits to keep this thing rolling and pass this thing. And, I mean, we also talked about amending the short-term rental. I mean, I, I hear the comments, I mean, what's the rush? Well, the rush is, for those citizens who want this done, we've been at this for four years. I mean, it's kind of a kick in the, you know what? If we can't decide on this all of a sudden. We also talked about possibly amending it, you know, once it's passed, right? I don't know what all that entails.
We did, that's, that's.
But I, I think maybe doing this based on, you know, hypothetically, people buying it. I mean, I get what you're saying. I, I agree that I don't, I mean, I want it to be correct. But I think it's a heavier, a heavier decision than, than just, you know. Is that, how, how come this hasn't come up? How come this hasn't been in front of us before at, at the point where we're here? I mean, are we really worried that so many short-term rentals are gonna sell in the next five to ten years and someone's not gonna replace them that we need to start this process all over again? That's what's before us, right? Basically.
Well, we've talked about having a number.
Yeah, yes.
Like from the very beginning. So this isn't a new thing.
No, I, I, I see what you're saying, but couldn't we just add that as a, as a, you know, can we say, well, hey, let's just, or does it have to be a major change? Can we?
What are you, Randy?
Go ahead, Randy.
Well, I, I, I don't know if I'm in sync with you or not. But to me, I, I would leave this in as it is and, and go back at it later because when you're gonna go and now measure areas of R1 and R2s and not know exactly where all the short terms are, maybe we, in most cases, we do. And then some, we don't, you could be talking another year to do that, to accomplish that. And so if, if we use that time, you know, pass this the way it is, and, you know, because I'm, I'm gonna assume that there's not a whole lot of sales of short-term rentals going to be sold at this point. You know what I mean? Like, somebody could still, I don't know, I won't get into that far. But anyway, I, I think if we leave it like it is right now and go back at it, it'll, it'll save us more time down the road and more money that we're spending, that the borough's spending to get this straight. But I still think then we can come back and make this different without having to go through the whole process again.
I was just gonna say something similar, Randy. It gives Gina a year to find out how many units are out there that are undocumented. Legally, they have a long-term permit because that's the only permit we issue.
Well, that's the other thing, because right now, you could have, you could have two short-term rentals from one end of the street to the other that are inside the same.
Well, we, we could, and we could have more than we dreamed we ever had. We don't know. So the one advantage of passing something as is, is it gives us a year. You can put it on the calendar. We'll revisit this next January and have the data to know how many units are, and where they're at in the borough. You can put them up on a map, know how many. And then if you want to do an amendment process, you go through the amendment process.
I mean, because it's possible, let's say we would agree that we think there should be a hundred and fifty, a cap at a hundred and fifty in the borough. That's just a number I'm throwing out there, okay? Or two fifty, whatever. After we pass this and Gina gets a grip, we might be past that already.
Yes.
I mean, I, I just threw that number out there to throw the number out there. I, I'm, I, I agree with what you guys are saying. I'm saying, we don't even know how many are out there.
We don't.
For the sake of the four years and the time and effort that people are putting into this, I'm only bringing it up. I'm not, you know, I'll vote if it comes to that, but I'm just simply saying, if, let's say we said there shouldn't be more than 150, and those that are operating, we've already agreed, can continue to operate the way they are. Nobody's banning the current ones. What if, we don't know.
Current permit or...
Yeah, the only way we're going to know how many we have is if we start this process. Is that right?
Yes.
So we could currently have more than what we would want to cap it at.
Yes.
If we came up with a number. And then we would all agree. We could hopefully discuss and apply our senses and our common senses and agree on a number that we're all agreeable to, so that they don't go away.
So let me offer this. Let's say one sells, that the new owner decides not to do an STR. That, and say there's 30 today. So one resident sells, doesn't want to continue short-term rentals. So it opens up a permit that can be in a lottery system for the next...
Not according to this.
It does not, if you listen to solicitor.
Okay.
But maybe it should work that way, but not according to...
That's a zoning amendment to your zoning regulations in R1 and R2.
Okay.
Usually you still have residents who want to have an STR or trying to figure out how to do that, but now they're totally shut down. They'll never have a permit to do it. According to, yeah, according to this, so.
And they will be phased out eventually over time, completely.
Not if you say what you're going to do. If, as Kent said, if you pass this and then you go back next year and do the amendment that you're talking about, you can get back to right where you want to be.
I mean, those are scary terms we're throwing out there. They're going to be phased out. Well, that's only going to happen is if everybody sells that's currently enjoying their STR renting in the borough, and those that buy it don't renew it.
Right, or they decide not to do it anymore.
That's a, whatever, that's hard, that's a far-fetched, you know. I'm not currently convinced that we should throw this out, four years of work, for that. I am not, I don't want to see them go away. I'm saying, by not taking action on this, we're losing an opportunity, I think, if I understand everybody correctly, to get a grip on this. And no one's saying that we want that to happen, that I've heard, anyway, nobody here said that. So we don't even know how many we have. It sounds like Gina, we're going to create a lot of work for Gina, but this is certainly something I'm sure we're going to revisit, whether it's voted on tonight or not. But I think, I'm hearing you right, that you're worried that they're going to be phased out because those that currently own them are going to sell, and then the people that buy them aren't going to renew or not going to buy them for that term. That surely isn't going to happen in the next couple of years, I would think. But I, well, that's what I think.
Lord.
I was just going to ask, could there be something written in here that we would go back and revisit it after a year to...
At any time, you can propose an amendment to...
No, no, but I'm saying, in this, can we say that we're, we go back and revisit after a year?
Anything's up to the majority of council. I don't think you can today lock in a future council. I mean, here, we're going to have elections this year. I don't think you can lock in what the next council will do.
However, you can ask to make an amendment from a year from today to the existing ordinance, and as long as the majority agrees, then you can do the amendment.
I think on the same line, if we approve this tonight and somebody wants to make a motion once it's approved, you could do that the day after we approve it.
That's true.
You make that amendment, because that would give you the starting point to start to, you know, figure out how, how many places can we go, how many homes, or does that affect? You don't have to wait a year to do that.
The starting point's collecting the data.
Right, yes.
At which we're going...
It's going to take about a year.
Yeah, we have nothing. There's no ordinance on the books right now.
So if we don't, if this effective date isn't until March, and Gina needs a whole year, it's not until March of next year?
All we can say is we'll do the best we can in that timeframe.
I haven't heard anybody around this table say a thing about the residents, the residential areas. They are important to Delphine as well, as they feel short-term rentals are important. Residential areas are also important, and be, you know. I would see more people moving out from them if they don't really like short-term rentals around them, like some do or some don't, so.
And we've heard that, and with the 50-50 bean counting last week that I mentioned, we've heard those comments from residents, and I agree with you. I think we need, this is a compromise. It's not, there's short-term rental owners, residents, nobody's going to be perfectly happy with this because it doesn't meet the vision of either group in its entirety. So I personally believe, sort of like what Kent said and what Randy just said, is we need to get this started, get it on the books, including what some of the STR people said. We've been at this for a long time. Give us a basis so we know what we're doing. I would say we should go ahead and pass this this evening, and then look at it again in a year or so. Give Gina the time she needs to do the paperwork and the processing and the permitting, so we know what we've got, then I think we will be able to do more properly down the road.
Other comments? Okay. That was page one, so, cross page four. Do we, I, refresh my memory, do we, we have the motion and seconded to vote on this ordinance?
We have amended it once.
As it's written right now, right?
And amended with that one.
It just has to be as amended.
As amended.
As amended.
We were going to add effectiveness 30 days from now, because we're going to work on the fee at the next meeting. We can make it...
Five, six weeks.
Sounds like 45 or 60 days.
Yeah, what do we do? The end of March, beginning of February, yeah.
Where does that usually go in an ordinance? Does that go before the severability or after the severability clause?
After.
Okay.
It's usually down anywhere they're saying now with and so forth, but we don't have the effective date listed.
So what Mr. Stover just said is we should add a section 575-10, effective date.
575-10.
Mm-hmm. Effective date, and then say the effective date shall be 60 days after the passing.
Yes.
So I'll make that amendment.
Is there a second to that?
Okay.
Moved and seconded. Those in favor of the amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we're back to the original motion now, which is to vote on this ordinance. Do I need to...
As amended.
As amended. Do I need to restate it?
Well, was it, was it stated that way, as amended?
It's going to stay the way it is. Is everybody clear on the voting? And the amendment?
The two amendments.
Two, yeah. Any other comments?
Do we need to do a roll call on this one, or...
You bet.
I'm going to listen.
So everybody knows if you're agreeing to keep, pass this tonight.
A yes vote means you're accepting the ordinance as it's written tonight, and a no vote means you're not accepting it as it's written tonight. So we're going to do a roll call vote. Mr. Stewart?
I have a point of order. We don't have the mayor here, so we don't have a tiebreaker.
We have nine members.
Nine members tonight.
Unless you vote twice.
Rigged election.
Mr. Brineer?
Yes.
Mr. Brackville?
Yes.
Ms. Clayton?
Yes.
Ms. Stan?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKean?
No.
Ms. Purnell?
No.
Ms. Sedgwick?
Yes.
Ms. Tostievacy?
Yes.
Six yeses, three noes.
Motion carries. The ordinance is going to be in effect for 60 days, or in 60 days.
Please, please.
There we go. Thank you, council. Tough, tough, like Joanne said. We're not going to please everybody or anybody. Somebody's going to not be happy. We try to do the best we can, and, of course, there's always the opportunity to amend the ordinance anytime. So keep that in mind. Thank you for your hard work, all council. Okay, we're down to appointment of civil service commission vacancy board chair and sewage enforcement officer, and we had two. Thanks, Jeff, for being here.
Thank you.
We have two applicants in your packet. Does somebody want to make a motion to appoint civil service commission person applicant? Let me get to that page.
I didn't see that in there.
It's in here.
John Diana.
Bianna.
Bianna.
What's it under? What's it under? It's under current and old business. I'm getting used to using a computer. I'll make the motion to appoint Jim Bianna as, to the civil service commission. Brackville.
He's a volunteer, right?
Yes, seconded by Mr. Brineer. I just wanted to read this, that, just for folks that may not know, civil service commission, what that appointment is. Any borough that has paid police officers has a legal requirement to have the civil service commission. The civil service commission is made up of the police chief, a solicitor, and three residents of the borough who are appointed by borough council. They adopt rules for examinations, appointments, promotions, transfers, reinstatements, demotions, suspensions, and discharges. Administer tests to determine the abilities of persons performing the required duties. Just wanted to let you know the definition of what that is. So any other comments for this appointment? Those in favor of the appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried unanimously. Sewage enforcement officer, Stan Wallace. He's been our sewage enforcement officer for, what, 20 years? Stan's very fair at it, reasonable fees. We probably use him, what, maybe once a year, if that? So I'm looking for a motion to support re-appointing Stan Wallace as our sewage enforcement officer.
I'll make that motion.
Barbara Dan made the motion, and Randy seconded it. Any comments on this appointment?
No, I have something, but I have to have the vote, because it's not directly...
Okay, all those in favor of this appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
So my comment is that he also included scheduled fees that are increased before his pass.
Yes, yes.
But that was not listed on the agenda, so can we put that, that pass-through fees on the agenda for the first meeting?
Okay.
I mean, okay, there are pass-through fees. We don't pay them.
Right, but we need, because it wasn't the public to know about, we just need to...
Okay.
Sure.
That's all I said.
Okay.
And then, as the other one, there was a vacancy on the vacancy board position?
Yes.
Could we put that on the list, since nobody applied for it?
Yes. We do have some potential candidates that we are going to reach out to for that. Does everybody know what the vacancy board does on council? Just in case. Sure. You go ahead. You're better at it than I am.
Well, basically, if there is a vacancy on council, and council itself having an even number of members can't decide on a new candidate, there's a tie, there's a tie in the voting, and 30 days elapses, then the issue goes to the vacancy board, which is all of council, the same eight members, and one chairperson. And that chairperson runs the meeting to decide who the candidate's going to be for, who's going to be voted on, you know, by majority to fill the vacancy.
And if I'm correct, the mayor does not, he cannot vote in this particular vote.
Yeah, that's why, you know, if you have a vacancy, in our case, we have nine members, so there's eight left. You have even number. The mayor does not step in and break the tie. It goes to the vacancy board. They add a citizen to make, basically be the tiebreaker as well as run the meeting, and then that, you know, the decision of the majority is who fills the vacancy. If for some reason the vacancy board doesn't agree or doesn't do it in 15 days, then it goes on to the courts, the center county court, to fill the vacancy.
And they appoint somebody.
They appoint somebody. Okay, now, we, in most cases, council fills the vacancy.
Kent, is, this is my eighth year here. We've all, we've used the vacancy board twice.
I would have just been more impressed if Doug Johnson would have been able to describe that just as well. I got you. Seriously, you think you passed that off?
It's as rare as a civil...
I knew the first part, not the whole way through the court.
It's never happened.
It has happened twice in eight years.
Okay, moving on. We're all clear on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Fee schedule. Well, let's see. There was a question at the January 3rd council meeting that was raised about water fee, other sources. You all have read this?
Yes.
This is okay, good. We can move on, no action required. Well, why should I sit here and read it when we all, there's no action? Memo on the ongoing projects at Governor's Park, Spring Street, Bishop Street, Streetscape, Big Spring, Musser Lane, Big Spring Grant, Stage at Talaran, the Armory Building, and Parkview Heights Stormwater. There's no action to be required, but Mr. Holderman put together a memo. Does any council members have any questions on the memo? Yes, Joanne?
I have two questions regarding the Spring Street Armory project.
Spring Street Armory property.
Okay, the first one is related to zoning and sustainability. The memo says that there's going to be a sidewalk around the backside of the building. The zoning ordinance, section 575-21B, infill development in the R2, it looks at the R2 district, it limits the amount of impermeable services, surfaces to 50% of the lot size, with the exception of already built structures on the property. The armory clearly covers more than 50% of the property. So my question is, will this sidewalk and associated line be constructed and maintained with permeable material? This is an issue of both zoning and stormwater concerns in this area.
Currently, we have our architect, our engineer and architect has developed a design, Joanne, and he has it as concrete.
Well, it will violate our ordinance if it is concrete, unless it's permeable concrete.
We'll check on that.
We'll check on that. It is for ADA access.
Right, okay. The second question is related to ADA accessibility. Is this going to be the only ADA accessible entrance to the building?
No.
Good, because if it was, then I, it would be creating a statement that people with disabilities are second-class.
It's not, we're good, yeah.
It'll be ADA accessible access to the large room, but you'll be able, there'll be ADA access through Lamb Street.
Okay, then that, that's fine. I just want to make sure...
We're good. We're moving on now. What's the next one? What, that answered your question?
Yeah.
We're good, okay. Where are we at? So any other questions for Dawn?
Appreciate you putting that together, Dawn. It's a lot of information.
Yep. Okay. Where are we at here? Back to public? Three. I'll get it here sooner or later.
New business.
New business. Memo regarding riffraff yard sale, Halloween and holiday parking in the borough. You see the proposed dates?
I'll make a motion to approve the dates, all the dates as listed.
Is there a second to that motion? Second.
McKean.
Discussion.
The Halloween one.
Halloween night.
Yeah, that one is, it says Tuesday, October 31st.
That's Halloween.
Right. What I was asking was, sometimes in the past, we put it on the Saturday rather than the actual, and we generally try to do it in coordination with the other municipalities. Do we know what the others are doing?
We don't, and somebody always does their own thing. The times we move is because of Friday Night Football or something like that.
We have in the past held it on Tuesday, Monday nights.
Yeah, so I know what that, just a question, trying to figure out if, because one of the concerns we had from citizens in the past was that what people were doing was trick-or-treat shopping, like, you know, doctor shopping, going from one to the other, and I was just wondering if we knew when the others were and if we could coordinate, but it's not...
Most places stay with the 31st, 6th to 8th. Most do, but not everybody does, even though we have tried to coordinate.
Is there more discussion?
Okay.
A call for the vote on the proposed dates for the yard sale, bulk waste, Halloween trick-or-treating, and the two-hour courtesy party, parking. Do you want me to read the dates and the time?
I think you should for the public, especially for riffraff, because we get a lot of calls.
All right. Yard sale dates, that would be Friday and Saturday, May 12th and 13th, 2023. The bulk waste or riffraff pickup dates, or the week, will be Monday... The bulk waste or riffraff pickup dates, or the week, will be Monday through Friday, May 15th to May 19th. And those riffraff dates follow your.
Refuge.
Refuge collection dates. Halloween trick-or-treating will be October 31st, Halloween. It's a Tuesday, and those hours are 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And then the two-hour courtesy parking that we have every year starts November 24th, 2023. That's the day after Thanksgiving, through January 1st of 2024. And that's a two-hour free courtesy parking. That's the motion on the table. All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carried unanimously. Okay, next one is an invoice for John Nastis Construction for the Governor's Park baseball field project. Can I have a motion and a second to make the payment? Does it go to Weber or does it go to John?
Goes to Nastis Construction. That's for $130,581.
$130,000?
$581.
Dollars.
I'll make that motion right now.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Joanna?
Saturday week.
Yeah. Joanna. Discussion on this payment. Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, I'm going to let Mr. Stewart or Mr. Holderman explain this one. We, I can state it if you want to make the explanation.
I mean, basically, there's a note here about an overpayment that came from the, the state Commonwealth. It's called an allocation for our pension plan. The state does subsidize pension, municipal pension plans, something called state aid. And we received notice that we received an overpayment of $61,483.64. We believe that this came as a result, I mean, it's very brief in the letter, but it appears to be as a result of us, the borough, approving a change to the pension plan about a year, year and a half ago. We went from a 5% to a 10% match from the municipal, municipal side and the borough side. And I, I, we believe, the staff believes that that change caused, you know, the state didn't get caught up with it until now, and basically realized they overpaid the amount of state aid, so that, that's.
We learned something, didn't we?
Well, we learned it was an expensive change.
Yeah.
Yes.
That was a recommendation by our finance director to pay that, but, well, anyhow, we owe the money, so we pay it.
Yeah, we have to pay it back. They, they, they paid, we pay it back, so, yes.
So I'll make the motion to give them back the money.
Is there a second to that motion?
Joanne, Tosti Vacy.
I'll second it.
Dan.
Barbara's second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried unanimously. Uh, let's see. A notice from Borough Council tonight is we had an executive session at 6:30 tonight, this evening, for personnel matters, which was a police collective bargaining agreement. Just made that public announcement. The last item is consider items for goals/issues list to be scheduled for February 6th, council work session. Call for a motion and a second to consider these goals for the February 6th work session.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second.
Dan and Bernier?
McKean.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry, McKean and Bernier.
I wanted to see if you're going to call me yep again.
I'm sorry.
Are we saying, was it actually putting on the agenda this time? This is the question I asked the last time, because this was so vague. So, are we saying that we, we've already heard that we've got the fee scheduled for the short-term rental to be discussed during the work session next time, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
And we need to do something?
No one mentioned something earlier.
Right.
Yes, the engineer's coming via Zoom to give council an overview.
Did he go to overlooks it?
Spring Street? Spring Street.
Is that too much?
And could we also add the camera fee issue?
This Musser Lane?
The Musser Lane issue, if we have time and put that one down at the bottom, because we could all always push that one to the next meeting.
Sounds like a plan. Okay, the, the motion is on the table, so I need, oh, is that an amendment to the motion?
That clarifies the amendments, yes.
Are you with that? Are you, okay. So, the motion is on the table. I'm asking for a vote now to approve it. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Okay. Council members, comments for the good of the order around the table. Let's start this time with Barbara.
Great, I have nothing to.
Okay.
Oh, I have something just totally not related here.
That's fine.
Um, the Center County Historical Society is presenting their preservation awards on Sunday. Um, and so three of the six recipients are Balfon-based. The owners of the Gumbo Mill will be receiving the award for preservation and restoration. Pat House, Balfon Art Museum, for I think his education and advocacy. And Jim Baldwin with the Union Cemetery for support and volunteerism.
Great.
So three out of the six from Balfon.
Super, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Nothing. Not today.
Yes, there's a new business opening in downtown Balfon on, it's a grand opening on Saturday, the 21st, at Chez Nouveau at 141 West High Street. It's a vintage clothing store.
Anybody else? Thanks, Deb. Joanna?
The EAB, the environmental advisory board is meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. Franklin Egan from regen.com, he works with the Lancaster Sustainability Program, is coming in and is going to do a presentation on what another community has been doing. He's, lives here in, lives in Bolbrook, so it's a close hop, skip, and a jump for him.
Okay, thank you. Randy?
I have nothing.
Okay. Dawn?
Just happy to be here, Doug.
I just, I have an out, I won't be here February 6th or the 20th, but you will be in excellent hands because our vice president, Mr. Bernier, and our pro tem, Ms. Dan, will be handling the meetings and the agenda. So I appreciate that, and I'll zoom in and see you in March in person. I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second. Dan?
Barbara Dan, second. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, meeting adjourned. Thank you.